Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance, I have myself Chair, representing the 4th District, Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District. Councilman Glover, representing the 13th District, Councilwoman Porter, representing the 10th District. And that's all we have at the moment. I suspect others will be joining us soon. From members of the Office of the President, I do have Nikki Thompson on line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nikki. Matt Stegman. And Erin DeGraffanreit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. From the Mayor's Office, do I have Natasha Meehew on the line? And Nina Themelis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. Alright, so this afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-0086, Minority in Women's Business Program Interim Extension, for the purpose of postponing for an interim period the automatic termination of the Minority in Women's Business Program, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the city procurement requirements. This bill was introduced on May 17, 2021, and the bill was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. I'm going to open the floor to Councilman Burnett.
Mr. Chair, can you remind me the bill number? You were cutting out on my end, but I think the issue is on my end. Hold on.
Bill 0086. This is the interim extension of the--
Oh, yes. Oh, I thought that was on behalf, that was the administration bill. That's why I wasn't prepared. I was like, wait, I don't have that notes in front of me, but I can speak on it. It was, yeah, we had a change at the last second where the Council President's Office took over the introduction on behalf of the administration for this. But it is a essentially, but it's something I was working on initially. So, and I'll defer to the President's Office for additional remarks, but it essentially extends the office to, I want to say, the end of the year. While there's a disparity study going on, there obviously may be a need to do, to push it out even further. But again, I'll defer to the President's Office on that if they have any additional updates on that.
Sure, I'll hand off to Nikki. Nikki, anything you'd like to say on behalf of the bill?
No, nothing additional to add, other than, you know, we are supportive and appreciate the leadership of Councilmember Burnett in pushing, first bringing this issue to our attention and then working with the agency to bring the bill forward. So, thank you.
Awesome. Looks like a tag team. We will jump into agency reports, so please use, please state your name as we go through each agency. We are going to start off with the Law Department, but I see Elena is on the phone. I'll come back to you, Elena. We'll jump into the Minority in Women's Business Opportunity Office.
Yes, this is Paul Taylor. I believe this, is this, did you mean MBO or Business Development?
I think I'm actually looking for Director Ingram.
I don't see him. I can, I can go ahead if you're open to me.
Please do.
Sure. This is Paul Taylor, Director for the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women's Business Program. Thank you, Councilman Burnett, for introducing this. Just so that everyone's aware, if this bill was not extended, the MB, the MBD, I mean, Minority Business Development and the Women Business Development would actually expire and be no longer effective. So this extends the time necessary to complete the disparity study during that interim. So, thank you for doing that. We have no objections to this, this bill as it's stated.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'll jump over to the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Elena DePietro from the Law Department. The Law Department approves the bill for formally efficiency, and as Mr. Taylor said, it is needed to extend the life of the law until the completion of the disparity study.
Thank you, Elena. Next up, I've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report and we do not oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. I'll open up the floor to questions from the committee. If there are any questions from the committee, please use the raise hand function, or just turn on your camera and please raise your hand. Seeing no questions, we're going to move on. Councilman Glover, do you have any questions?
Questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on to public testimony. Give me a moment. Okay, so the committee staff will coordinate the public testimony, so please be patient. If you are connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you would wish to testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking, and users who call in and cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of your testimony, and if a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or to provide their testimony in the chat function. With that, I don't see any hands raised. And do we have anybody on the phone? No one on the phone line? Okay, and are there any proposed amendments to the bill? I don't see any amendments at the moment. And as I understand, from the Council President's Office, we're now looking to move on this today, to have folks have some time to chew it over before we move forward with it.
If there are no questions or no additional amendments, then, you know, we're fine with moving forward with 86. We more so are wanting to give agencies time to go through 70, 68, and 69 because some extensive amendments were just sent over. So, just wanted to share that.
Got it. Okay, I think we can move on 86 then. To that end, I'll entertain a motion to move the bill.
Motion to move the bill, Mr. Chair?
Moved by Councilman Burnett. Is there a second?
Seconded by Glover.
Seconded by Glover. Conway, yes. Burnett? Burnett, yes? Cohen?
Yes.
Cohen, yes. Costello? I'm not sure if Costello is in the meeting. Costello is going to be absent. Glover?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
And Ramos?
Yes.
Alright, the bill passes 6 to 0, and it will be heard at the second read at our next council hearing. The next bill that the committee will hear is Bill 21-0061, Minority in Women's Business Enterprises Self-Performance Credit, for the purpose of modifying the applicable self-performance credit for minority in women's business enterprise prime contractors. This bill was introduced on April 5, 2021, by Councilmember Chris Burnett. And I'll open the floor to Councilman Burnett for the Councilman sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So, this one, again, I think it's pretty straightforward, but there are some concerns that have been raised by the Law Department that I still think we need to work through. But essentially, if a MBE that is a prime contractor, is awarded a contract as a prime right now, they would get 50%, they may count up to 50% of their, of the dollar value of the work that they intend to do their own, internally essentially, with their own crews, toward the MBE or WBE goal. The thinking that I had in introducing this is that if you are already a minority contractor and are capable of doing 100% of the applicable work, then you should get 100% of the credit, instead of having to find a separate contractor to do that remaining work. I do know the Law Department has raised some concerns about how this may affect the charter. So, you know, I know they do plan to come and explain that further and, you know, obviously, we need more discussion on that. But that's essentially what the bill does, Mr. Chair, in summary, quick summary. And there were a little time limit, so I didn't want to be long-winded today. We have a lot of bills.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Burnett. I think that sums it up pretty well. We will move into agency reports. First, we've got the Law Department.
Hi, Mr. Chair. So, we have no problem with the concept of raising the percentage. It's just that the Charter gives the Board of Estimates power to do that. In the past, the Board of Estimates hadn't spoken on this matter. It was a blank slate. And so, in one of the MBE/WBE program renewals, like the bill you just heard, the council inserted a 50% credit. And since the Board of Estimates had no regulations or anything on that, that was fine. But they do now. And so, the Board of Estimates now has their own regulation. So that would be the proper place to change the percentage. And once that's changed, then, you know, then certainly you could update the code to follow it. But the reality is, the Board of Estimates gets, you know, they get the ability to do it if they want to do it. And since they've now entered that field and have decided to do that, that's really where the power lies.
Thank you, Hillary. We'll move on to the Minority in Women's Business Opportunity Office, and I'm not sure if Chief Ingram is on at the moment. Oh, there we go. Good to see you, Chief Ingram. You're muted.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Councilman Conway. I just received notice of this committee meeting, so I'm unsure as to which bill we're discussing right now. I do apologize. And just for the record, I am in negotiations right now with federal court on a matter. And so, I may be pulled away from a judge to respond to an issue. And they're calling me right, they're actually calling me right now, so, but I can respond right now. And I'll just call the court back.
Sure. We're on Bill 21-0061, and this is the Minority in Women's Business Enterprises Self-Performance Credit. Effectively, this would allow primes that are eligible as MBEs to apply for 100% or to qualify for 100% of the MBE requirements. And that's what's up for consideration right now.
I'm sorry. I am definitely caught at a loss today. I--
So, what we'll do is, I understand, and this may be a matter of not getting you on the distribution list as the acting chief right now, so I apologize on our behalf, and we'll make sure that we get you looped in going forward.
So I do have my colleague, Ms. Elena DePietro, to probably respond on behalf of MBO. She may have more substantive knowledge of the bill than I may do.
Oh, great. Hey, Elena.
Elena DePietro from the Law Department. I think MBO is in agreement with the Law Department regarding the proper way to approach this, you know, this particular change in the self-performance credit. So, they, you know, they rest on their report.
Okay, thank you.
And just for anecdotal--
Today, so there will be an additional opportunity if you have additional insights between now and the time we vote. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James for the Department of Finance. Finance Dan Thayer report. We do not oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. And then we'll move on to the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-owned Business Development.
Sure. I, this is Paul Taylor, and I'm in support of the spirit and idea of this bill and have said such in my response. However, I will defer to the Law Department, who suggested that this may not be the right forum to address this issue. And so, I will defer my comments to agree with the Law Department.
Thank you, Director Taylor. With that, are there any questions from the committee about the bill? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you. So Hillary said something that I just wanted to get a little more clarity on because we hadn't talked about it previously. So, Hillary, are you indicating that the Board, the BOE can make this revision on their own? They don't necessarily need council action? And if they did that, then we could update the code? Is that-- Just wanted to make sure I got it clear.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, and do you know what the process would be for that, just so we understand a little bit better?
My understanding is it's part of the current procurement regulations, so I would assume that that would be in the BOE's change to those. But I would, you know, I would defer to anybody from the Comptroller's Office or the BOE itself on how they're-- you know, I don't know if they have a new process in terms of changing their regulations, but that's essentially what it would be.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If nobody from the Comptroller's Office is on or can answer that right now, I'm happy to follow up with them offline to advocate for that.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Any other questions from the committee on this matter?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Ramos, floor yours.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Mr. Chair, thank you. So if it is the BOE who has to do this initially, would it be-- could we express our intent that this is important to the council through passage of this ordinance on condition, of some sort of condition that they pass it, or by changing this to a resolution for action?
You could certainly change it to a resolution. I don't know if that requires a reintroduction of a different bill. I'd leave that up to legislative reference, and I haven't looked at the city, I haven't looked at the rules on that from the city council, but there's nothing wrong with expressing that intent, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was my only question.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move on to public testimony. If you have testimony, please use the raise hand function on the bottom right if you're in the WebEx meeting. I do not see any raised hands. Alright, do we have anybody on the line? No one on the line. Okay, so we are not going to vote on this today, but I understand we have some work we need to do with law or maybe even reformatting this bill or reintroducing it in a different way to make sure that we at least get a painting across. So to that end, we are going to go to recess for this bill and move on to our next bill. The next bill is Bill 21-0070, Required Market Research, for the purpose of requiring contracting agencies to conduct market research investigations before determining that no qualified certified business enterprises are available to enter into leases or concessions contracts, requiring the Minority in Women's Business Opportunity Office to attempt to identify qualified certified business enterprises if contracting agencies state that no qualified certified business enterprises are available to enter into leases or concessions contracts. This bill was introduced on April 19, 2021, by Councilmember Chris Burnett. I'm going to open the floor to Councilman Burnett. Councilman Burnett, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. And so, this, again, a partnership with the President's Office on this bill, so we'd like to give them some time to speak as well. But what piqued my interest in this issue was sort of building on the other, the emergency procurement bill that we passed earlier this term. You know, just making sure with the intention of that, that piece of legislation and this one as well, is to make sure that we are plugging in as many MBEs and WBEs into the city's procurement pipeline as we can and making sure that if our contracts are going out, that we have a full lay of the land of what businesses are out there that may be able to provide that work, so that we're just creating more opportunity for local MBEs, which I think can have a huge economic impact on the city of Baltimore. And so, this is just making sure that each agency is doing their due diligence in that process when they are looking for businesses to solicit for contracts with the city of Baltimore, that we have a full lay of the land and a full understanding of what companies are out there and how do we get them plugged in so that they can benefit from these projects. But again, we'd like an opportunity for, I guess Nikki's here on behalf of the Council President to speak on this as well, as it's a part of a larger package and a larger initiative that they're working through. Thank you.
Sure, Nikki, have any additional comments?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Just to share additionally, yes, this is one of three bills in a larger package put together, led by the Council President, all aimed at making sure that Baltimore is accessible equally, equitably, and all businesses are included in being able to take care of, take opportunities. So, specifically, this legislation is following with a state practice, a longstanding federal practice. It's not new, so we're really just getting our practices up to speed. And it's just, as the Councilmember already said, a submission of market research conducted by the agency to let us know what the market is like and if we need to be doing more to support our businesses.
Thank you, Nikki. We will go into agency reports, and so we'll start off again with the Law Department.
Good morning, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Turner for the City Law Department. As we say in our bill report, there's no legal impediments to the passage of this bill. We had some concern with what market research really meant in terms of criteria that would have to be established for somebody to get a waiver. So we thought ultimately that would be required, that MBO would be required to establish rules and regulations that sort of flesh that out. And we are aware that there are also amendments from MBO, and we would be, and one of the amendments would say that whatever regulations, rules and regulations that MBO would establish would be approved by the Board of Estimates. So we would be supportive if that amendment is entertained by this committee and the city council, we would also be supportive of that amendment to have the BOE approve the rules and regulations. Other than that, that pretty much completes our report. We are, we see no reason to oppose or no legal impediments to the passage of the bill as drafted.
Thank you. Thank you, Victor. We will move on. I'm not sure if Chief Ingram is still on the line. The Minority in Women's Business Opportunity Office. Chief Ingram, are you still there or are you--
I am, Mr. Chair. If Mr. Ingram is not there, I can talk to his report.
That would be helpful.
So, MBO is supportive of the bill. They think market research would go a long way of making sure that we have minority contracts issued to full extent, so they are supportive of that. There is concern that getting the BOE, one of the provisions of this bill, several provisions, are that the BOE would approve every waiver that is brought before, that is attempted by an agency. The thought is that that probably would inundate, because there are many of these things, probably inundate the BOE and slow down the whole contracting process. So the entity that is being provided by MBO basically would remove the BOE from every decisions that are being made regarding a waiver. And essentially, the idea here would be to, in order to keep the BOE involved, would be, as I mentioned earlier in my report, that there would be rules and regulations adopted by MBO that would be ultimately approved by the BOE. So, and ultimately, as we know, the BOE basically oversees the operations of MBO in the first place. So if they're doing something that's untoward, that's how the BOE doesn't like, they would always be able to step in and correct the situation. That's the report.
Thank you, Victor. Alright, next we'll hear from the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report and do not oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-owned Business Development.
This is Paul Taylor. I am in agreement with the spirit and the idea of this bill, and I sincerely believe that market research, to really understand, do we have qualified certified and/or businesses in the market area that we can encourage to become certified, is available, and I think market research and outreach to those businesses is critically important. I would be concerned, and maybe this is the same concern that Finance has, that there is a budget component to this. And so, to do proper market research and engagement really requires some financial resources to be able to do that. That would be my report. I am in general agreement with this.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, and then we're going to move on to the Labor Commissioner's Office.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. The Office of the Labor Commissioner defers us to the appropriate city agencies since this is not a labor relations matter.
Thank you. The question that, we're going to jump into questions from the committee. I want to dive back into the issue that Mr. Taylor brought up about the budget component. And I was hoping maybe Finance could maybe give a little insight, if we have any yet, on what that may mean if there is an expense here.
In terms of finances analysis, we did not expect this would be a large, it would be minimal fiscal impact. We know at least procurement already is doing some market research with the staff that we have. So in our analysis, we expect there to be minimal fiscal impact and not have an impact, a major impact for agencies based on their current resources around procurement.
Thank you. Thank you, Mara. And, Mr. Taylor, is there anything else additionally that you had in mind as you were thinking about the additional expense?
Yeah, I do agree that MBO's office does some of this work. What I, what I'm concerned, and I think which is what the intent of this bill, was to actually do the deep dive in the market area to really understand the capacity and capability of existing businesses to just do a blast and hope that we will get engagement is probably a little bit more than what the current activity in MBO is. And I think the spirit of this bill, as it appears to me, is to get a better sense of who is our market, who is available in the market to provide us. And this is for all of the services that the city currently purchases. You know, we're looking at doing something like this right now for the IT. And, you know, in IT, there are lots and lots of businesses out there that for one reason or another may not want to become certified or may not want to be in our, in our market area as a vendor. So what we need to understand that because we do need to expand our resources and companies that do business with the city, and I think that requires additional expense. And I think that requires, um, additional expense and a deeper dive into the market.
Thank you. Um, I, I seem to have skipped over the Comptroller's Office, and this is the second time I've done that. So I apologize, Casey. Um, would you like to add to your report?
Um, thank you. Um, Casey Keller here, uh, from the Office of the Comptroller and the Director of Communications. Um, I'm just going to give a brief overview and then, uh, send it over to my colleague, uh, Jim Knighton, the Director of Policy and Board of Estimates. Uh, the Comptroller's Office wants to first thank the bill sponsor for introducing, um, this, um, bill. We, um, full-heartedly support it. Um, and, um, Jim will get into more of the details. Um, but, um, we are, we are ready to, um, prepare for any, um, influx of waivers coming our way. We already spend about eight hours each week, um, reviewing waivers and MBO requests. So I'll refer to, uh, Jim to, uh, give more context.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members. Uh, Jim Knighton from the Comptroller's Office. Just to, to underline and highlight, uh, what Casey mentioned, the Comptroller's Office is in support of this bill. I think anyone who watches the weekly Board of Estimates meetings knows that, uh, supporting and promoting, uh, minority businesses in the city is one of the primary, um, priorities of Comptroller Henry. Uh, this bill would involve the Board of Estimates in the waiver process in two separate ways. First, before a bid is solicited, the board would be asked to make a determination on a proposed waiver. And if a contracting agency were to waive the, uh, minority business requirements, the board would be asked to make a determination on that. Uh, so it's basically waivers coming, coming to us from two different ways. Um, the Comptroller has also been clear that we're actually in the process of automating our, uh, the, the process by which agencies submit items to the Board of Estimates, uh, which is helping us in terms of our workload. And therefore, you know, we, we respectfully assert that, uh, even though thi- this might increase our workload somewhat, it would not be, you know, beyond a degree that it couldn't be accommodated, uh, with our existing resources. So we, we are in support of the bill and be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Um, any, any questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair, one or two?
Uh, yes, Councilwoman Ramos.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with my, um, video. Oh, there it is. Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair and Committee. Uh, so, uh, two questions. One is, if I understand correctly, currently the Comptroller's Office and the BOE get waivers from various agencies because they cannot find more MBEs to be able to do the work. Is that what I'm hearing? And so this bill would be so that the agencies have to do better, do more market research to be able to come up with the company so that you're not asking for the waivers, correct?
Are, are you asking that to the Comptroller's Office? Yes, that, right, exactly. Yes, you're right.
I just wanted to, just to make sure. So, so my, uh, other question, I guess, is to this sponsor or the Council President's Office. Uh, when we do our disparity studies every four years, um, the contractor who does that usually interviews tons of various businesses. Does that data, or maybe, maybe this is for Finance in the Purchasing Office, does the data of who we've interviewed, um, get back to Finance or the Comptroller's Office? Because that is a set of folks that are being interviewed for these, for the disparity study, but then may not be followed up with to be able to have the opportunity, um, to actually bid. Um, am I right? Is that something that we need to figure out how to do? Or is that proprietary information on the contractor's part? For the study, the person, the contractor who does the study?
If I might answer, uh, Paul Taylor, if I might answer for, so typically, the, there is a sense of, uh, anonymity for, for, to get the best answers from some of the contractors when we're doing these disparity studies. And so we guarantee them that we're, you know, their answers are going to be confidential and, and so forth. So in those meetings, you probably are getting good answers. And maybe, um, as you're saying, that maybe they could provide us with some anecdotal data that helps us to understand. Um, because in my conversations in, in the past with, uh, the contractor providing the disparity study, um, they, their study is asking very specific questions about utilization, about the, or, or why they're not certified with Baltimore City. And some of those answers might be useful in this case. Um, I've, I, I, um, I, I think it's critically important. I mean, because right now, if the, the, the request for waivers typically are something that's coming from the prime contractor having done some phone calls and search and then find no satisfactory vendor to, to, uh, to formal services with them. And then that's what initiates the waiver conversation. Um, I think if, um, if we had our own data that helps us to understand the market and understand who's available and do a deeper dive in that, I think that would be a useful conversation for us.
Thank you. Uh, can I follow up, Mr. Chair? I, I agree with that last statement because I think you're, you're right. We need to have our own. But we were, are, are now paying a boatload of money to a contractor to be able to do a disparity study. And maybe there needs to be something in there that says, if you choose to not be anonymous, then we can share your information, uh, with the city. I'm just, um, market research is not cheap, as, as, uh, my, my earlier colleague was talking about. So, uh, why not, um, use data that's already being collected in this particular way? If the person that's being interviewed allows for it. So that, I mean, we are probably too late on this one, but just enough, in thinking about the future of how we do this, does it make sense to utilize some of the data in the disparity study or the, the people who interview for the disparity study?
May I, I just add one point. I think that's a great issue raised for me. I think it also raises the concern of inter-agency sharing of information. And so an individual may, um, in that initial meeting, agree to have their information maybe shared, particularly with that agency that they've probably built a rapport with in some way, shape or form. And so does that also extend to the other agencies that will ultimately get that information? Um, if it's shared for market research purposes, because, you know, the process of procurement goes through, starts in one agency and then goes through others. So that would be my only other consideration that I would raise there.
I agree. I don't think that it, this is something that needs to be amended into the bill. I think it's something just to consider as we move forward with, uh, disparity studies moving forward. So thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to discuss it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Any other questions, uh, folks on the committee? Seeing no further questions, we'll move on to public testimony. Uh, if you have a, uh, if you want to testify, please use the raise hand function at the bottom right if you're in the meeting. Uh, I see no hands. Uh, do you have anybody on the phone lines? No one on the phone lines? So we have no public testimony. All right, with that, um, we are not going to move on this bill today. Sounds like we have a little bit more work to do. Um, so with that, we'll go on to recess and move on, um, to the next bill. The next bill is 21-0069, Transparency in Procurement. For the purpose of adding certain disclosure requirements required related to fulfillment of detailed specifications, um, to contracts, prior contracting experience and the demographic characteristics for, of employees, other sources of labor, and board members of contractors and subcontractors, subcontractors for city contracts over $100,000, defining certain terms, establishing certain administrative penalties, and generally relating to better transparency in Baltimore City procurement. This bill is introduced on April 19th, 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Antonio Glover. Councilman Glover, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the committee members and all that are participating in this hearing today. Uh, transparency in government is never a bad thing. Uh, we all, at some point in our political lives, have demanded more transparency in our elected officials. Uh, this is just as important in procurement demand for transparency as it is in the budget process and the policing process. Uh, far too long, out-of-state contractors have excelled and become rich because of Baltimore City taxpayer dollars. While local minority contractors, both men and women, have been overlooked, this bill is designed to ensure a fair process in the city's procurement policies, creating oversight to ensure that we are being diverse in who we award contracts to. This bill is designed to help even the playing field. So, uh, that's just a little on, uh, this report. I think, uh, this report also lessens necessity for the future IJ reports that uncover any unsettling informations about our procurement process. Uh, this bill also sets penalties for contractors that fail to disclose the information and require the information to be shared publicly. Uh, that's all I have at the moment, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Uh, now we will hear from our agency representatives, starting once again with the Law Department.
Hi, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Rulee from the Law Department. There are several legal concerns with enacting a law that forces people who are already contracting with the city to have to disclose things in order to not jeopardize their existing contracts. So the Law Department has, um, drafted a few amendments that would get to the same goal of this bill, but do it in a constitutional way. And what it would do is, is mandate that the city put these disclosure requirements in their contracts with these contractors. In that way, we can enforce them. Um, it would also just make clear that we're not trying to retroactively add terms to existing contracts because that would be the constitutional issue there. Um, and finally, it would make it clear that it's really, it's up to the city council what they want to do in terms of what information they're mandating the city put in the contracts to be disclosed. You can't, uh, unfortunately, just leave that up to the unfettered discretion of the administrative branch. Um, there needs to be some guidelines. So the Law Department's report basically takes this objective and, and puts it in a framework that makes it legally workable and mandates instead of that the contractors disclose it, that the city require these disclosures in its contracts. And it sounds like a sort of sleight of hand, but that's what's needed in order to get it over the constitutional hurdle. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee or anyone else would have.
Thank you, Hillary. Um, we're going to move on to the Minority Women's Business Opportunity Office. Chief Ingram, I'm not sure if you're still there.
Yes, I'm here.
Awesome. Thank you.
The Minority Woman in Business Office stands on the report. However, for, um, additional information, I believe the bill in itself, I mean, despite the legal concerns that was raised by the Law Department, there are some, um, benefits for having a bill like that. But again, I would defer to the Law Department's representations about the legal sufficiency of it.
Thank you, Chief Ingram. Uh, we'll move on to the Department of Finance.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and council members. Uh, I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. Uh, the Finance Department supports the bill with amendments. Uh, first and most importantly, the Finance Department does not believe that this legislation aligns with the Department of Finance mission and function, meaning that the Department of Finance believes that this function, the collection of the information and the reporting of the information should be assigned to either the Minority and Women's Business Enterprise Office located within the Law Department or should be located with, within the Mayor's Office of Employment Development as opposed to being housed with, as a function within the Finance Department. Um, additionally, we believe that, that the costs associated with this are minimal. So cost is not an issue. And again, uh, the Finance Department supports the legislation with amendments that the function be assigned to either the MBO office in law or at MoAD. Thank you. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Director Raymond. Uh, we'll, we'll, um, get to questions after we've heard from each of the agencies. Um, next we've got the Labor Commissioner.
Good afternoon. Once again, the Labor Commissioner, uh, defers to other city agencies since this is not a labor relations matter.
Thank you. Uh, and then we've got the Mayor's Office of Minority Women-owned Business Development.
Uh, this is Paul Taylor. Um, uh, our agency stands by the report that we submitted. And, um, now that I've heard additional commentary, um, it leads me to also defer to the Law Department in the amendments that are being presented here. Uh, I do understand the spirit of this and, um, also share the same concerns about making sure that we engage our minority and women businesses and their employees in Baltimore City.
Thank you. Uh, and last but not least, we've got the Office of the Comptroller.
Hi, uh, Casey Keller here again from the Office of the Comptroller. Um, the Office of the Comptroller supports, uh, this bill, um, and thanks to the sponsor for introducing it. I'm going to, uh, turn it over to my colleague, uh, James Knighton, to, uh, further expand on our report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members. Uh, Jim Knighton again. Uh, the Comptroller's Office, uh, supports Bill 210069. We feel that the, the three types of information that would be required to be reported by the bill, uh, is much, it's much better for us to get that on the front end of the process rather than, say, when, when a contract comes to the Board of Estimates for an amendment or an extension. Uh, and we often find that some of these areas, uh, are areas that are, that turn out to be problems later on. So we'd rather have the information on the front end than have to fix it on the back end. Um, we are proposing a, a very minor, what we hope is a friendly amendment. And what our amendment would simply do is to add the Board of Estimates, uh, as one of the bodies that would receive the annual report. It simply adds the Board of Estimates to the Mayor and City Council, uh, to receive the annual report. And it changes the annual report date from April 1st to June 30th. So that's our, our very simple, uh, amendment. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, with that, I will open up the floor to questions from the committee. Seeing no questions from the committee.
I just wanted to point out that, um, Finance and, um, MBO's reports are not on Legistar, but I believe they were emailed to us. Is that right?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, thanks. I found them. Thank you.
All right. Uh, any, any other questions from the committee? All right. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to public testimony. Uh, if you have testimony on this bill, please use the raise hand function at the bottom right on, on the WebEx application. I don't see any raised hands, and I don't believe we have anybody calling in. Um, so it sounds like we still have a little bit more work to do on this bill, so we're not going to move on, on it today. Um, so to that end, we are going to...
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Um, I see that there's a report from DGS. Did they, um, do an agency report for us? I mean, are, are they here to talk about their possible amendments?
I was under the impression that it was, DGS was for 68, which we haven't heard yet, not...
Excuse me. I'm in the wrong plot, please. Sorry about that. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
All good. See, I was just going right to that one, so you beat me to the punch. All right. Uh, any other comments, concerns, or questions from the committee before we move to, um, to recess this bill and move to the next one? Okay, so we're going to go into recess on this bill and move on to Bill 21-0068, curing mistakes in bids for the purpose of permitting the city purchasing agent to waive minor irregular- yeah, can't say that word. Irregularities in bids, uh, permitting a bidder to cure mistakes in a bid under certain conditions, permitting a bidder to withdraw a bid under certain conditions, defining certain terms, requiring the city purchasing agent to prepare a determination showing the relief that was granted or denied regarding a bid's correction or withdrawal, and clarifying that the duties of the city purchasing agent, notwithstanding this subtitle. This bill was introduced on April 19th, 2021, uh, and was sponsored by President Nick Mosby. Uh, and I will open the floor to Nikki Thompson, if you have any, um, comments on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to share a little bit about this bill, curing mistakes in bids. So, currently, there is no process in place that allows contractors that bid on our city contracts to cure their minor mistakes or minor irregularities on submitted bids. And this often disqualifies contractors from the bidding process, therefore furthering limiting opportunities, um, for contractors that are generally awarded these contracts. So, this bill seeks to remedy that process by creating a curing process, by allowing for minor irregularities to be waived if it's in the city's best interest. Um, additionally, this is also not a new practice. It is allowed at the state level and, uh, by many of our neighboring jurisdictions and states as well. So, again, trying to take some best practices that we've seen work and apply them to Baltimore City's, uh, process as well. I know that there are a number of amendments that will be discussed by the agencies, and we definitely welcome their expertise because this has to work, um, with the agencies in order for it to work for the businesses. So, uh, also appreciate all of their, um, amendments that they will ultimately share. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Um, we are going to move on to agency reports. Uh, and first, we're going to start off with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Elena DePietra from the Law Department. So, the Law Department unfortunately has, has a lot of legal issues with this bill. In general, what the bill does is, in addition to what Nikki already said, it provides for a definition of, of, um, minor irregularity. However, then it goes on to, in the rest of the bill, to never mention minor irregularities. So, they use the word mistake instead, so that needs to be reconciled in, um, in amendments. Um, then, the first part of the bill talks about mistakes discovered before opening. Um, and basically, we have the same issues with all these issues. Some had, some have issues, some only have a couple of them. But what it boils down to is that the, our charter, unlike, like, the Constitution for the state or, or some of the other newer county charters, has a lot of process in the charter itself. So, when we, when the city council wants to modify, um, any, uh, a procedure in the charter, a lot of time, or modify a procedure for procurement, a lot of times the charter gets in the way, um, because it already covers that. And in our case, um, unlike previous, um, attempts at this, there's, there's even less room for the city council to, to legislate because we now have these procurement regs that were enacted pursuant to the Board of Estimates' power to provide for procedures for different types of, um, actions that it's going to take. So, now, there, we have to look at those for, um, for conflicts as well. So, um, when we look through this bill, um, we, uh, we determine that, you know, we, not only are there, um, there are those charter issues involved, but, for example, in the first, um, section that defines, uh, minor irregularity, um, it doesn't, and I don't, I don't think this was on purpose, because I think it was, this was caused by the whole issue that minor irregularity was not consistently used through the rest of the bill. But because it doesn't tell us when that is used, um, to, to enforce this law, it's essentially void for vagueness because an average person wouldn't be able to tell what their legal obligations were under this law. So, um, so there's that, that problem that needs to be corrected. Um, uh, it also potentially amounts to an illegal delegation of board authority to the person, purchasing agent without any standards for the purchasing agent to base their, their decision on. Um, in Maryland and, and most small governments, that you can't, um, you can't delegate government authority or, or authority granted in any law to another entity with, um, without giving them some parameters to make the decision because you can't delegate discretion. So, any discretionary decision, um, of a official cannot be delegated unless there's, guidelines on how to exercise that. And so, that would be, that would be something we'd have to, um, look at if, um, forth amendments. Um, the next section of the bill applies to bid mis-, bids discovered before opening, which begs the question, if the bids aren't open, how do you discover if there's a irregularity? So, I'm assuming in that case that the bidder brings it to the attention of the purchasing agent. Again, in this section, um, there's also provisions for, um, the solicitor to receive, uh, to receive a request from the bidder to approve or disapprove a cure or a waiver. And in that, you know, and the solicitor can't be put in that position. It creates a conflict for, for the city solicitor because if there were ever litigation generated by that deci-, by the decision with respect to the bid, he would be in the position of having to defend the city. Um, so, and, and so he can't give advice to a bidder during the process. So, we'll have to figure out a way to get around, to not do, not put them in, in that position. Um, again, this impinges on the charter authority of the board to award contracts because in essence, um, they're taking certain, certain bids out of the process altogether before the Board of Estimates even sees them. So, um, and finally, uh, the final section talks about mistakes discovered after the award of the bid. Um, and again, it, it gets the city solicitor involved, which would, you know, first of all, the city solicitor can't give advice to a, to anybody but a city agency, and then it would have that, um, conflict issue as well. Um, it would impinge on the authority to make, um, to make this, the Board of Estimates' decision-making powers with respect to award of contracts. Um, it impinges on the requirement to, um, that the, um, I'm sorry, I lost my point. Oh, that is, it gets awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder since you're allowing, actually, some of these issues go to responsiveness and responsibility. So, that would, that would take over for the Board of Estimates when that's their decision to make. Um, so that's the, the essence of what the Law Department, um, you know, issues are with the bill. We're happy to sit down and, um, you know, try to come up with a way to make it work without having those, um, uh, you know, conflicts with the Board of Estimates.
Thank you so much, Elena. Um, very helpful. Um, next up, we've got the Minority Women's Business Opportunity Office.
I don't know if, if-
Good afternoon again. Oh, good afternoon again. Yes, uh, the, uh, Minority Women-owned and Business Opportunity Office supports this bill. However, there are some, despite the legal sufficiency, um, issues that Mr. Pietro discussed, um, there are some issues as it relates to, um, certification of businesses that need to be flushed out when these issues arise. And this is a, and I can just think of a particular case that's happening at, that has happened at this moment, which is, requiring additional work, uh, specifically as it relates to, um, the certification of businesses and the investigations that may stem from some bid mistakes because of bid protests and so on. And then it may take parties to investigate and so on, which may belabor or delay the procurement of maybe an emergency contract. So, um, I do believe processes should be discussed, um, with relevant agencies, um, to ensure that, um, the efficiency and the prosecution of these contracts can be perfected. And I'm done.
Thank you, Chief Ingram. Uh, next up, we've got the Department, Department of Finance.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and council members. I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. The Department of Finance has several concerns with this legislation. Uh, we have articulated these concerns to the, uh, City Council President's Office, uh, in order to not be repetitive with what the response from the Law Department is. Generally, the finance departments are the same, specifically as it relates to vagueness of some of the terms in terms of, for example, minor irregularity, immaterial, or inconsequential. We need to, we believe those terms have to be more clearly defined. And we definitely believe that, uh, the legislation is presently written, which allows the opportunity for the city solicitor to step in and make decisions would represent a conflict of interest. So, as a result of the Finance Department's concern, concerns with this legislation, the Finance Department opposes the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Raymond. Uh, next up, we've got the Department of General Services. So, we're gonna, um, we need to elevate Ben Brosh. Just give me a moment.
Hello, this is, uh, Ben Brosh from the Department of General Services.
Hey, Ben. Um, you, can you give us your agency report, please?
Yes, yes. Good afternoon, uh, council members and Council Chair Conway. Um, so this is Ben Brosh from the Department of General Services. Uh, regarding City Council Bill 21-0068, uh, Department of General Services has submitted a written response. Um, I would just note that at the time of our written response, we were not in receipt of the Law Department's, um, more thorough response. And we would recognize that, um, they have a lot more substantive feedback to provide with respect to potential, you know, legal requirements or ramifications. Um, you know, as, as, um, from the intent of the bill, though, we are generally supportive of that. Um, we are available for any further, um, response or, uh, question and answer as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, next up, we've got the Department of Planning.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Um, I, I'm Stephanie Smith, um, representing the Department of Planning. I'm here to also comment on, um, Bill 21-0068. Um, at the time of the writing of our report, as an agency, we were not in objection, but did note that we defer to the Department of Finance as a more impacted agency. So, as we've heard, um, the fullness of their remarks, we definitely defer to the Department of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, next up, we've got the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-owned Business Development.
Great. This is Paul Taylor. Um, and, uh, we are in general support of the spirit of this bill. Um, and noted, uh, um, without the full breadth of both the Finance and Law Department's objections, um, noted that, uh, we are in agreement as long as those corrections do not substantially change the bid or intent of the original lowest responsive, responsible proposal. So, um, the, uh, Law Department has articulated that even more, and so we defer to both the Law Department and the Finance Department on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And the next up, we have the Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Committee members. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. Uh, in our report, we listed some of the references in the charter as to, uh, the powers of, uh, central purchasing that were given to the Department of Finance and, uh, other aspects and the role of Board of Estimates in, um, overseeing the purchasing of the city. Uh, we're here to stand by our report, and, uh, we defer to both law and to finance. And we just wanted to point out in our response, we mentioned that the mayor has set up a, uh, steering committee to comprehensively, uh, reassess the, uh, city's procurement policies and practices. And we just mentioned that is ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Okay, uh, I believe that's all of the agencies. I, I'm forgetting one, the Office of the Comptroller.
Karen, uh, Casey Keller here, Director of Communications for the Office of the Comptroller. Office of the Comptroller supports, uh, this bill with amendments, but I'm going to defer to James Knighton, the Director of Policy and Board of Estimates, to elaborate on our report. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and members. Jim Knighton again. Uh, the Comptroller's Office is certainly in support of the concept behind this bill and the intent. Uh, we see sometimes that minor mistakes in bids can, uh, disadvantage, uh, minority and small businesses. And of course, we wanna, we wanna promote them, as I said in some of my earlier testimony. I know that there are a lot of amendments and, uh, things that have been proposed, uh, to make this bill better. So, we would throw one more idea into the mix that, uh, a possibility of an amendment that when the city purchasing agent, uh, arrives at a determination to, to waive a minor mistake, that they then bring that to the Board of Estimates, uh, for, for approval. And the reason why I say that is, um, City Code Article 5, Section 1228B already allows the Board of Estimates to waive minor defects and errors, uh, in a bidder's submission. Uh, but they don't alw-, the, the minor defects and errors don't always get to the board because they're screened out at the administrative level. So, uh, we'd be happy, you know, to work with any stakeholders, uh, as appropriate to, to, to improve on this concept, but our overall position is, is favorable. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, I believe we have actually heard from all the agencies. I want to open up the floor to questions from the committee. Um, I have a question myself, and I'd love to dig in a little bit more with, um, Finance on, um, the concerns that were brought forward. Um, it sounds like a lot of them actually mirror the ones that were brought forward by the Law Department. Um, I, I, I want to know if we were able to fix some of the concerns that, um, both you and the Law Department have brought forward. Are there other concerns that, um, we have with curing mistakes or curing, um, small irregularities?
Uh, this is Henry Raymond. Uh, as long as all of the adri-, all of the issues that were outlined by law, which Finance echoes and supports, are addressed and corrected, uh, we would then not be opposed. Um, so to me, the, the real issue is clarification over the terms. Minor irregularity, what's immaterial, what's inconsequential. Uh, and then, again, the potential conflict that the solicitor would have in making a decision, then perhaps having to defend that position at a Board of Estimates protest or, uh, having to defend that in a legal proceeding, if, if the city were to be sued. So, yes, if those issues can be addressed, then, uh, I could reconsider our present position.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
You're welcome.
Um, any additional questions from the committee? Seeing no questions, uh, we will move on to public testimony. Uh, please use the raise hand function on the bottom right if you're in the WebEx. I don't see any questions. Uh, excuse me, testimony, and no callers are online. Um, it sounds like we have a little bit more, or a lot more work to do on this bill. Um, but, um, you know, so I look forward to working with the Law Department and Finance and, um, the Council President's Office to, to iron out the details here. Does that end? Any other, uh, closing questions, comments, or thoughts before we go into recess? Okay, so this hearing is in recess. Thank you all.